Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for June 25th, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, we'll go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance and then do the roll call. So please join me. All right. Good evening. Welcome. Welcome to everybody who is here in the council chambers and welcome to anybody who is watching online. I will go ahead and before we do roll call, I want to make a note that under other business, we're going to go ahead and have our park superintendent give an update on the parks master plan. And so we'll add that to the agenda. So let's go ahead with that being said, we'll move into our roll call. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have two exceptional items of ceremonial business. We have a Pride Month proclamation, a Juneteenth proclamation, and then we also will be honoring Scott Dubasar with 10 years of service. So I'm going to go ahead and ask the council to join me down below and we'll go ahead and we have some people here from the South Coast Equity Coalition. They want to join us in our Pride Proclamation. And before we begin, I just want to say thank you for joining us here in the council chambers and thank you for your presentation last night during our work session. So, City of North Bend, Oregon proclamation, whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Inn incident which occurred in June 1969 and is generally recognized as a catalyst of LGBTQ plus rights movements. And whereas every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection and benefit of the law without discrimination based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, region, religion, sex, age, and mental or physical disability. And whereas the long and ongoing struggle of the LGBTQ plus community for basic civil and human rights continues to provide inspiration to all. And whereas the North Bend celebrates the history and diversity of our city's LGBTQ plus community and promotes a society in which all residents can live free from discrimination. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate this harmony in which we coexist. And therefore, I Jessica Ingbley, Mayor of the City of North Bend and on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim this month of June 2024 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the City of North Bend and encourage everyone to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respect the rights of all people and celebrate the great diversity of our city. And witness whereof, I here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of North Bend to be affixed the 25th day of June 2024. Thank you. And we have a proclamation for you. Okay, and we'll get one last little maybe still photo here. Our candidate's hard to turn. You want to get closer? Yes. All right. Thank you again for your presentation and we look forward to having you again around the council chambers. All right. So we have another proclamation and this is for Juneteenth. City of North Bend, Oregon proclamation, whereas Juneteenth celebrated annually on June 19th commemorates the day in 1965. 1865, thank you, when enslaved African Americans in Galveston, Texas were finally informed of their freedom. Two and a half years after emancipation proclamation. This proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln, marking the end of slavery and the beginning of a long and ongoing journey towards equity, justice, and civil rights for Black Americans. And whereas this day of celebration, reflection, and education encourages all citizens to commit to the continuous work of advancing equity, promoting justice, and fostering a society where Black Americans and all individuals are visible, valued, and can experience the fullness of joy and freedom. And whereas by celebrating Juneteenth, the City of North Bend dedicates itself to supporting initiatives and policies that promote diversity, inclusion, equity, and ensures that the voices of marginalized communities are heard and respected. The City of North Bend commits itself to the understanding and acknowledgement of past historical injustices, the need to move beyond them and working towards a future where freedom and equity are truly realized by all. Freedom and equality are truly realized by all. Now, therefore, I Jessica Ingbley, Mayor of the City of North Bend, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth in the City of North Bend and encourage all citizens to join in the observance of this important day for all Americans. And witness whereof, I here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of North Bend to be affixed this 25th day of June 2024. Thank you. Okay. All right. We appreciate you being here and we welcome anytime. All right. Well, council, do you want to stay down here? We do have another celebration. And did I have, was Ralph done? I'm going to present this?
Sure.
Okay. We'll just hang out and let you know.
Well, tonight, Scott Dubasar, who I've known for about 35 years, reaches his 10th year anniversary, not tonight, so there is his 10th year anniversary of sitting with them. Scott's our senior maintenance worker in the street department. He, we relied very heavily on him for any piping thing. He's been in the business of preparing piping and putting in new facilities, infrastructure for about 35, maybe a few more years. I can't remember when he first started, but through his own business and worked for the city with them. He's a real asset to the city. Most of us rely on his opinion for various things just because he has that experience. And I'm happy that he's been here for 10 years. I hope he continues some more. I don't know if he wants to do another damn, but so if you'll come on, that's Scott and he also raised his family right then, so.
Thank you.
Okay, hold your certificate. Okay, there we go. All right, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Very appreciated.
Thank you. Okay. All right, who's our ceremonial items? All right. So moving down on the agenda, I believe that we have, we had a change to the minutes in the consent calendar and that's already been updated. So I will look for a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented with the additions to the, with the changes to the yesterday.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the changes that were made to the June 17th.
Okay, first from Councilor Norrell, second from Councilor Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor accepting the consent calendar as presented with the exception of the minutes noted from yesterday's work session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I believe we have one person here in person and it's Brooke Mathews?
Matthews.
Matthews. All right, Brooke, if you want to come on forward here, I have a comment that I'm going to read before you begin. There's a chair and a microphone there. Just want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of our local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and our governing body is taking the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder or finance director are here taking notes of any action need. All right, when you are ready to begin, we'll head and start the timer.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, Mayor Engleke and city council members. My name is Brooke Matthews and I manage the Balance of State Continuum of Care for the state of Oregon. The continuum of care assists with HUD and OHCS funding and we help facilitate housing, domestic violence, and youth services for the 26 counties that make up rural Oregon, which includes Coos County. Part of my role with the state is that I visit all 26 of my counties and report back to OHCS and to the governor's office on challenges and successes in rural Oregon. I was most recently in Coos County back in March and I met with the Office of Homeless Response as well as representatives from the City of North Bend at the City of Coos Bay and local service providers. And in March, there was some concern regarding the delay of distribution of the House Bill 5019 funds to agencies with eligible expenses. And that was the main purpose of my visit in March was to assess the situation there. We are now three months later and I was contacted because there were still concerns regarding fund distribution that it was being held up and we're now halfway through that grant period. And so this is an area of concern for both OHCS and the continuum of care. I do however, understand that due to a capacity issue with the City of North Bend, that there was recently a decision made to move the fiscal agent from the City of North Bend to the City of Coos Bay. And so I would like to express the support of the continuum for this move. And we are already in contact with the City of Coos Bay and with Nicole Rutherford there to offer our support in any way that we can. I'm also here to offer any support if during that transition, the City of North Bend finds that any additional assistance is needed from the continuum, I am more than happy to intervene. I'm always accessible. And I would like to say that Coos Bay was my home for a little over a decade and so I do have a great deal of affection for Coos and Curry County. So while I was here, it was really nice to get to visit with Matt and Scott with the Housing Authority and with Alternative Youth Activities. And I was greatly encouraged to hear of the wonderful work that's being done here. And I will be reporting on those successes and the encouraging news back up to OHCS and to the governor's office later on this week so that they understand the really fabulous work that you're here, that you're doing here. And also to continue to extend the support of the continuum for all of these local agencies in any way that we possibly can help. I am always available. Again, Brooke Matthews, I'm always available and I am here in any way to assist with anything that has to do with housing, youth services, domestic violence. We are working with local agencies to try and return some of the federal COC dollars to your communities, working through with AYA, hopefully with some domestic violence providers and some of your direct service providers in Coos and Curry County to return some COC dollars back to the community.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your work. Thank you. Right. Number six on the agenda, this is the Business Oregon Project Completion Report. And we heard about this last night during our work session. Is there a motion from the council? Oh, yes, we did have a full public hearing. Mr. Wolf, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I am here and I believe this is a report from your finance director.
Okay. Now, Mr. Wolf is, and yes, we have our finance, sorry. I'm bringing it the wrong place. We have our finance director here and then I do have kind of some details of the public hearing that we can go into, but we'll go ahead and was there anything, something that you wanted? Would you like me to begin the public hearing?
Yeah, I think there's a script.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, Mr. Wolf, I'll go ahead and begin the public hearing on Business Oregon Project Completion Report, Community Development Block Grant. This is should I go ahead and continue? And this would be the time for a public hearing on the Oregon Project Completion Report and at this time we'll officially open the hearing. I'm going to ask the counselors if there's any conflict of interest or exporte contacts to report. Yeah. All right. And so here in and seeing none, then will the staff please present their report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is, we're closing out Business Oregon Development CBD grant. It was a $500,000 grant back from 2022. And so here we are at the end of 2024. It's taken some time to fully disperse those funds. We really began dispersing those funds in this fiscal year. So starting in August of this year is when the first disbursement started to go out for these funds. I still haven't gotten the final numbers from Neighborhood Works Amqua, who's been our sub recipient of, and doing the distribution work for us. And so I'm expecting to get those numbers anytime from them now. Part of completing this grant is, holding this public hearing is one of the requirements of it. Just to give you a few statistics on it, I know from what I've gathered from our sub recipient that over 150 individuals or cases were managed. If you look down kind of the list of the assistance that was provided, much of it is rent and utility assistance. There were also some, it looked like mortgage assistance as well in a couple instances, but the overwhelming majority were rent assistance and utility assistance to low and moderate income individuals and families within Coos County and within Douglas County. I think the only other piece of it is I'm still waiting to hear on whether or not we can do a small restricted purpose donation for the purpose of providing fair housing support in some fashion within Coos County as well. And so we're looking to do a donation to the local Oregon law group that's helps low income individuals with such issues. So with that, that's the report that I have to provide to you tonight and we'll let you continue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There's a limit of three, there's a limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Business Oregon Project Completion Report, Community Block Grant? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff?
Yes, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that you've spent most of the money as it's to individuals and there's a little bit left. And so you're doing it to, you're, you're considering a donation to an organization that actually aids in that spectrum of people that would be getting it.
Right. And it's a very small donation. Actually, I had to, I've asked for approval from the Oversight Agency for doing the donation. Still waiting on hearing that. It was a $2,500 donation to a local group for the restricted purpose of helping with fair housing issues.
So less than 1%, half a percent.
Very, very tiny. I, I haven't heard the final numbers yet. I don't know that the entire 500,000 would be dispersed from this. It may be, you know, several thousand short of that, but still waiting to hear.
Okay. Thank you. Well, if there's no further questions or, and discussion, I will now close the hearing at this time. Yeah, okay. When are you, do you think you're going to hear from, give her an update?
I should hear this week. We're, I think we're supposed to have our closeouts this week. There's a whole lot of documentation that we have to supply and so does Neighborhood Works Amqua, they have to supply a, quite a bit of information as well. So we've been working kind of diligently over the last several weeks to make sure all those pieces are in place to, to close it out.
And then once this is done, is there another stuff because of the process?
There is not. This will be, this grant will be completed, wrapped up. If, if there are any, any unused funds, I suspect we would have to send those.
Return. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, if there's no further questions, I will now close the hearing at this time. And Mr. Wolf, if there's anything else I need to add, or can I now entertain a motion?
Yeah. And, and to your finance director, Mr. Bridges, do we, is there a motion that's needed to, to wrap this up as part of this process? Or is it just the public hearing portion?
I'm holding a public hearing.
Okay. More, more information. All right. Well, thank you. And it's noted. And then that would take us into number eight, which is the award of seven, which is our Coos County Homeless Response Advisory Board. Last night, during the council meeting or during the work session, I noted that the city administrator and I were at a point where we've reached 24 months serving on this committee. I hadn't heard of anybody from the council yet today wanting to be appointed on that. So I am looking for some community members that might be interested and so I will bring that to you hopefully by the next meeting. Okay. So no action needed on that, but just kind of an FYI and a public, yes, acknowledgement of anybody who's listening or any other staff members that we will be looking for two people from the City of North Bend to represent the City of North Bend on the Coos County Homeless Response Advisory Board.
So can you, when will we, will we get an announcement about like, what do they have to do if they want to volunteer or?
Yeah, I would.
In between meetings?
Yeah. What I'll do is work with the staff to see if we need a, an application link we have to some of our similar committees or, and then we'll just put it on the city website. In the meantime, they can contact the city staff or myself.
And is the, do we approve the appointment as a council?
It's a
This is a different, I mean, it's intergovernmental.
Yeah, I might need to wait till the city administrator gets back to confirm on that. But usually sometimes these are like mayor appointments. And so unless the council has any objections.
Yes. Yeah. Would you and the city manager serve until we get those spots filled?
Um, I am not sure. I don't know. Depends on, there's, yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Mayor, how often are the meetings? How often?
They've been meeting Thursdays at 3:30.
So it's weekly?
Uh, not necessarily, monthly. All right. So in the meantime, passing the names towards myself or the staff. All right. So no action needed for seven. Number eight, we are looking for a motion for the award of the bid of pump station number four. With a suggested motion on page 21 of your
I move that the city council award the contract pump station number four replacement project to Laxie or Lake Sea Clifton Corporation in the amount, what is it?
Lasky.
Lasky, Lasky Clifton Corporation in the amount of 865,279 contingent upon EPA approval.
Here first from Councilor Jones. Second from Councilor Garbodi. Any discussion? Well, always great information during the work session. So we have our first, our second, all in favor to I think I heard, or any discussion? She already, yes. No, no discussion. All moved. So all in favor of the city council to award the contract for the pump station number four replacement project to Laxie Clifton Corporation in the amount of $865,279 contingent upon EPA approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine is the award, number nine on the agenda is the award of the bid of Broadway Avenue. Is there a motion from the council on this?
I move the city council award the Broadway Avenue Sewer Rehabilitation Project to Johnson Rock Products for $1,253,414.75.
Thank you. Councilor Jones had a first, Councilor Garbodi had a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All right. All in favor to have the city council award the Broadway Avenue Sewer Rehabilitation Project to Johnson Rock Products for $1,253,414.75, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 is the purchase of the multi-use utility vehicle. Page 34 is a suggestive motion. We had some information in the work session last night on this.
I'll make the motion to the city council approve the purchase of a multi-use vehicle for North Bend, from North Bend Powersport for $21,008.33, utilizing funds from the capital projects fund and remaining ARCA funds and authorize the necessary steps to complete the acquisition.
First from Councilor Hamilton, second from Councilor Garbodi. New session? No discussion? All in favor of the city council to approve the purchase of the multi-use utility vehicle from North Bend Powersports for $21,083.33, utilizing funds from the capital projects funds and remaining ARCA funds and authorize the necessary steps to complete this acquisition, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Scripts are really indispensable.
This would then takes us to a number 11, which was the action resulting in executive session and there was none, so we can drop that off. Number 12 was our executive director's report. We received that electronically. It's posted on Facebook page and the website. Is there anything you wanted to add?
It is, it is posted out there. There, there is one item related to our fire department that did not make it into the report that would ask that our fire chief report on, just so everybody's aware of the situation.
Okay.
Just came.
All right.
Just real quickly, I think most of you are aware, but we did have a, a failure with the engine in one of our fire trucks. And so it's something that's still under warranty at this time. It's our newer fire engine and it is a same, we had a very similar problem probably three or four months ago. So we have less than 5,000 miles on this vehicle since we had the engine rebuilt. So our guys were out on emergency call on Sunday. Some alarms went off and so they immediately brought the engine back. They parked it. And then we were able to get our reserve engine, which is over at our other fire station, which we use for our volunteer response and we're able to bring it back to the main station. So we're able to cover that and there was no downtime or we didn't have enough fire engines ready to go. And we contacted then their Hughes, which sold us the vehicle. They immediately contacted Cummins, who tests the engine itself as Cummins. And so it's all covered under the warranty and it got on a tow truck on Monday by two o'clock. So this happened really quick and it's now up in Coburn getting evaluated. Our hope is the same situation happened before, similar. And so if they can't fix it, then they're going to have to put in a new motor in it itself. So that's kind of where we're at on that. We just want to give you guys an update and did anybody have any questions on that?
Let's hope we get a free.
Either way, it's going to be fixed, right?
Yeah, figure out why it's new.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, I'm sure that I will be very deep in that tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. City reports. All right. So I mean, my announcement about the coordinated response committee. So we're looking for applicants for that. Mr. Hamilton, should you and I report out about, so logically, do you realize?
Logically, so banners are out. The cornhole is online as far as I know. Okay?
Yep.
The gate cutting is going to be Friday, two weeks. Safety stroll, after safety stroll and Little Deacon in the Bay is having their show that night. The mall is doing some things and I don't think we've got an agenda on their stuff yet.
They, yeah, they have, I'm not sure if it's on their website, but we'll find out. We, because we've had a lot of support from Melissa Rice and Stephanie Wilson making agendas. Melissa Rice and Stephanie Wilson making um agendas, air, putting together. Event pages and a huge shout out to Barb Dunham, who works for Travel Oregon and is a a former um. Expert on July Jubilee and she's been really putting together a lot of things. And so if anybody is interested in, as as. Um Counselor Hamilton was saying, signing up for the cornhole tournament, signing up for, I don't think you mentioned the five K.
And the disco, forgot about the five K, cause I plan to attend that, not run it.
He's gonna hand out water.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and um yeah, so so many activities is gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, so. Make sure you clear calendars.
Have they announced to the princesses or the people? Ambassador court has been named and um the next um uh.
Our next meeting is gonna be coronation.
Yeah, we originally were thinking about doing it tonight and um they wanted to make sure there was enough time for all the things to come in for the court. And so we'll just leave it for a surprise for that night. You'll get to see, so.
And the cake cutting is citizen of the year, business of the year and.
Contributing.
Contributing citizen of the year.
Yeah.
Which I know they picked it not released yet, right?
We're working on those announcements.
Being scored up.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We're getting close.
Yeah. It's gonna be great, yeah, so that next, so our next meeting um will be the coronation and then we'll go on to all the events that weekend, so help us, if you guys. I know you're a big Facebooker. Come on, Larry, help me share out the events on social media.
That's happened in context, I've never written a thing on it.
Okay. If you, if you have uh apps or you know, like some of the sort of different things next door, push it out there, cause um we want to make sure. That everybody, there's, there's literally something for everybody on those sort of things. Okay, any other, I think that's it for committee reports. Then that will take us to Counselor Thomas. So um Counselor Noroff.
Are we not going to have a report from Mr. Bixler?
I'm gonna do that under other business.
Other business, I see. Well, I'm um perplexed as to how we have an ad hoc committee. Reviewing the parks master plan to update the park master plan that did not come before the council. As was first brought up in February. For approval, because the council rules say that any committees, ad hoc committees. They come to the council for approval. So. I'm very confused as to why that did not happen. That's my comment.
Okay, we'll get an update tonight on that. Counselor Schultz?
Um I just wanted to thank the South Coast Equity Coalition for coming yesterday. It was really informative. Um I have attended the diversity conference and it's really powerful and just thinking about. Diversity in our community and helping, especially was, I just interact as a teacher who helps students with disabilities. It just makes me think about um getting access to the community and making sure that everyone gets the same kind of access. And so equity is different than than equality, so just thinking about that, so I appreciated them coming in.
Yeah, good. Counselor Garbodi, nothing from you. Counselor Hamilton?
Uh you know, just thinking about the July Jubilee and and uh the people like Barnes, Stephanie, Melissa. Uh you uh jumped in and 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 helped with this along with our special events committee and the mayor. Like uh you you, I, I got on the committee and. I didn't think it was gonna be near as hard as it was and and everybody's kind of pulled things together at the last minute to make this thing happen. So that's pretty cool. And uh you know, summertime and everybody in town, uh the couple of new businesses that are in town. And I've heard some really good things about some of them and people are starting to uh fill them up. I drive by and take a look in the parking lot, see if they're full. So that's pretty cool, so I really don't have to leave North Bend anymore. Everything's pretty much here, so I like that, so. Like that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's great to hear about the businesses coming in. Um it's always really. Eye opening to hear about all of the volunteer work to pull everything together. Um and and I include the volunteer work of our staffers, with just a lot of dedicated. Time, extra time, extra energy that's pulled in for. Everybody, you know, the residents here, so thank you for your service.
Yeah, all right. Um well, this is our last meeting before the Fourth of July, so I just want to make sure everybody has a very safe Fourth of July out there. And um you know, just enjoying the summer, lots of kids out running around, so be careful when you're driving. And um nothing really specific except for sign up for those, those events for the July Jubilee. It's gonna be a really big weekend, so. Um. With that, then I will go ahead and move on to other business. Um we had a question from Counselor Nordoff and wanted um an update. So Erin, if you want to come on forward um on the master plan, and I think you want to remind us, there had been, there was some confusion about. Um the, there was a meeting, well, I'll let, I'll let you give the updates. How we came about appointing the two parks member to that advisory board.
So Parks Master Plan um process has been going on longer than I've been here, but in March, we awarded HE with the contract to do the Parks Master Plan. Our first meeting with them with staff, um. They decided they wanted, for the lack of better word, and this I think is where we're getting a little confused and. In the weeds of a steering committee. It's not really a committee, it's basically a a group of individuals from the community. To help them kind of understand who we have in the community, how to reach those community members. What those community members use for social media. How do we go about really getting in contact with them?
Okay, and that, that was where then we took the two individuals that were on our parks.
Hold up, so those four members um are two from the actual parks committee. Um are both on there and then two that were recommended by council.
Okay.
Um. And I have an email, I can't remember exactly who, but there were two additional recommended. Um to give us kind of a diversity and and just a group of people that really represented. North Bend as a whole. Um. With that being said, we'd be more than happy if the parks committee was up and functioning. To use them as further input, as some type of guidance to interact with that steering committee. Um unfortunately, best of my knowledge, they haven't met since December of twenty-one. Um so that wasn't an option. Since then, we had an initial meeting with them, introduced them to HGE. Um they gave input on best ways to re- reach people, uh good questions to ask in the community, how to engage with the citizens. The last master plan, we had about two hundred and fifty people that actually responded to the survey. Uh we would like to do much better than that with this one, so at this point, we've progressed, we've had a couple virtual meetings, we worked with HGE. We actually have a full survey out, a QR code to that, a press release, a flyer. Um we have plans on setting an information ten up at July Jubilee. And that'll be manned HGE and and probably myself and hopefully some of the people from that steering section. Um and additionally, when I do my talk of the town in August, I'll do that at the community center on the twentieth of August at six P M. And that will really be an outreach from HGE. And from the citizens to engage with those questions, to try to get more people to do the survey. Um our goal is. Really reach out in the community and find out what do we need. Um by no means, it's HGE, it's two staff members and then the four from, from the public. Um and by no means are we trying to guide this at all. What we're trying to do is find really relevant questions and good ways to reach out to the community to find out what do we need. Now, HGE's taking that all on board and building that as we move forward, so that's kind of where we're at now.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a neighbor who's been on the parks committee and I contacted him and he had not heard anything, although he did get a certificate of appreciation. Even though he was appointed in twenty twenty-one and he has never been invited to a meeting.
So those, and I, maybe your city attorney can remind me if I'm off on dates. I think our appointments are only one year.
Appointments per the council rules to anything. Like a committee like this with the Parks Master Plan must be, shall be approved by the council. What happened here?
And they probably expire after a year. I don't know, Mr. Wolf, if you have that information. Um I know uh and um Erin had made a comment about our parks committee hadn't been meeting. Our parks committee meets if the council has direction for them or something that we wanted them to look into. So since the council hadn't been giving the committee um any work to do, there had been no need to have them meet.
Mayor, I, I must say, the last time that this was spoken about was February twenty-eight. When the contract was awarded and it was suggested by Mr. Milliron that all the council make one person appointment.
Answer the first questions first. So, Mr. Wolf, can you remind me about the assignments with? And our parks members? They were, usually they're one-year appointments, right, and then.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up your council rules here at the moment.
What's it, sir?
I am pulling up the council uh rules on committees.
And we can.
I guess I'm not sure what, what, what is the, what is the question? I'm trying to figure out here.
I'm not sure what the question is. I think that we have, I think there's some confusion over what the tasks of the parks committee members have when their appointments expire. And Counselor Nordoff has some concern that there was a a a person that was on the parks committee that wasn't notified. My memory of the um of the people that we appointed to help. Take a look at the master plan, there remembers that meeting, I had said like, I'm not gonna be there tomorrow. Each counselor were able to appoint two people. That, I'm gonna ask, I know Counselor Nordoff has spoken. Does anybody else here on the council remember kind of how that went? We had, we, we had decided that we were going to have, to recommend some people to be part of this. Wasn't, it's not an ad hoc committee, but.
My understanding is that this is below. The master plan, it's below the parks committee. It's a function of. Both the gap in time between when the master plan was officially pushed through and now. And so my understanding is that this is about surveying the applicants. So that that new information, as far as we can get, can be brought into the pool. So that we can have another sort of, maybe a master plan update at some point and a park.
And there's, do you remember the process, though, is what I'm trying to, we all.
I was, I thought we were asked to appoint.
Was it one person, one person, and then we had made a decision.
We had not made any decisions at all, and it was never brought up again.
I don't know if we want to go ahead and get into the leads of this now.
Put it on the work session agenda for next week.
Well, so, um and I remember we had some discussion of. Each, so each council was one person we appointed. We decided there was two people that were active on the parks committee.
You wanted us to each recommend somebody.
Yes, and then that happened, right?
No.
Yeah, we're, no.
Asked us to submit a name.
No, it's not in the minutes anywhere. It's not on the agenda anywhere. It never happened.
We were asked to submit the city administrator, people that we wanted to, one person.
It requires a council vote and it's never had a vote.
Well, it's not the committee.
No, it's, it says, go read the council rules. It covers this, it covers this issue. I'll put it on the works.
Maybe Mr. Wolf has some comments.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess we're still having some conversation here, trying to figure out the, what. My recollect, recollection was, and that, and again, this might be a moot point here, that each one of us had appointed some people. We had also um decided there were two people that were, had. Um current assignments on the park committees. After one year, I believe they typically expire.
Three years and.
And Counselor, just can you stop talking over everybody? It's really not productive. And in fact.
You're not with your information, mayor.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we'll go ahead then and put a pause on this conversation. Um and we will circle back and have some more details about. Who was appointed, what wasn't appointed, who was recommended.
Yeah, we were just asked for names.
Recommended, and then hopefully we can come back and have a conversation instead of yelling at people, so, meeting adjourned.